...topic and so this was a request for
Here's a set.
An overview of our safety and security program and obviously with events like Sandy Hook and Maryville, Bill Chuck High School, that's sort of an understandable topic. So this one's gonna be a bit more disjointed than the others because we've got numerous hands in different aspects of this particular presentation and it's been put together as kind of a group project over the last several weeks, so we'll just kind of wing it as we go along. So some of the things we're gonna cover today are just sort of our, the drills and procedures that were required to conduct and that we do conduct. Our MSOC, so what, what resources do we put into our safety and security program? So MSOCs would be non-staffing resources and now there are staffing resources. Talk a little bit about our emergency communications plan and capability and then also talk about the crisis reality assessment that we have been working on with Jesus, Bill and Mosa for the last several months and you received a copy of the executive summary of that as well as Jesus's recommendations. So, under drills and procedures, here's the topics we'll be covering. Required drills, procedures, emergency planning, district and building level, district support structures and activities, building emergency prep, and then a little bit about the watchdogs program. So this point I'll turn over to Lydia, I think, if you can start.
So before I start on drills, I'm gonna back up to the emergency communications manual. So the business office and Leanna's office put this together originally and it's updated every year and each school gets a copy so that all that information that you need in a crisis emergency is in one place. So it even tells you on the front cover, if it's a staff, student, or school issue, this is your line of contact and if it's facility or weather, these are the people you should be calling.
I'm very familiar with their red book.
Yes, oh my, good. That's reassuring. For Ryan, my four, my first 4:50, 6:00 AM phone call, I'm like, who are you, where's my phone? And then each school is tailored specific to their school. So I, in this office, have a lot of phone numbers. They have the phone numbers that they would need, including the fire, the police phone numbers, and then also in this book is their campus map for their particular school or location. So we update these every year, we give the schools a copy every year and we train to this, this manual and then we just as need it. So in the manual is information on the drills. So the RCW listed there requires basically 10 drills, a drill that for every month that school is in session, three lockdowns, three fire evacuation drills, one shelter in place, one safety-related drill, and we've selected earthquake drill. And then one drill using the rapid responder system which can overlap any of those drills.
Can you describe the rapid responder system?
The rapid responder system is tied to...
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement.
So all the maps of the school and all of that contact stuff, it's all in so that if a first responder, law enforcement comes on scene, they can plug it into their computer and bring all that information up online and it's statewide, that the high school, all school information is in rapid responders.
Yeah, so the facility layout.
It's an IT system.
Yeah, and you have the facility layout, the emergency shut-offs, everything, everything.
Excellent, thank you. Is it working, the power handle?
Yeah. See if we can get online.
So you can report the results of your fire drill in the rapid responder system? It's not its own unique, separate? You could pick one of those drills and overlap. So then at the beginning of the school year, we sent the list of when, when the drills, what kind of drills, when the drills were gonna be held. Schools could, could alert us if that date just flat out didn't work and that they were picking an alternate date and that's fine too, as long as we know that they're addressing their one drill a month requirement. So again, they have their own maps for their schools and all the drill information is, is in here. What is a fire drill? What is the communication drill? What is a lockdown drill and the elements of each are contained in those. We also have communication drills. We have red phones and the red phones are basically landlines that will not go down in a power failure, unlike, you know, our computerized telephones here. These could go down. The red phones are not gonna go down, except for maybe a major earthquake. So we test those red phones once a month with the schools to make sure they have a way of communication and what numbers they're supposed to contact. We also have radios at every site and we test the radios to make sure that people know what frequency they're supposed to be on, how to use them, how to get ahold of us. And we know how to get ahold of them and that people are responding on the other end in case that, you know, this phone's down, their red phone's not plugged in, maybe they have their radio on hand. So is, you know, communication being one of the first things that, that goes sideways in a major incident. Principals, our incident command system certified, which is part of that rapid responder requirement. There's training classes and we make sure that they, they all meet the requirements of that. Emergency preparedness coordinators. We have at least one employee in the school, doesn't have to be the principal, that makes sure they have the plan and supplies updated. There are three emergency prep coordinator meetings that are held here. And then we also have some guidelines that we give to the PTAs who want to help with emergency preparedness activities and supplies. So we have a one-page document that we give to the PTAs when they say, "Oh, we wanna help with emergency preparedness."
Does each school have their own supplies so that they can essentially live on the campus for three days? Is that the minimum?
Each school has, yeah, each school has their own supplies. And I think three days is generally the standard. I mean, three days might be, not live in large for three days. And over the last several years, Dick started this a few years ago, before he retired, we've been systematically kind of replacing and updating some of the more dilapidated emergency containers each campus has.
Well, each campus, yeah.
Yeah, we had the East Ridge visit last year, yeah, where they, they showed us theirs and...
Do they each have, each campus has a container?
So are there any, any schools that don't have PTA support? I mean, SASS doesn't have PTA, but you know what I mean, are there any buildings that, 'cause they do supply a lot of the, the equipment in there.
But all these boys have them regardless of what, of how much their PTA is?
How much part TTA. I have found that PTA participation is, is pretty good. It's obviously gonna be more robust at some schools, but I know that in, you know, I'm a mom in Wouldnen and Wouldnen is a, you know, relatively poor school and they have a line item for emergency prep even in their budget, so. And then this year we, we have...
Comparatively speaking.
SASS will, SASS will come over to support services and use the croons and what she's with up front.
You know, they're right next to the warehouse, yeah. They're right next to the bigger refrigerators.
Well, 'cause we're not working on this.
They look at it, one of our coworkers.
I think that's one thing that's going pretty well because the...
A big giant barbecue.
Yeah, a big giant barbecue and everything.
The more urgent need is the containers themselves, which is usually far out of the, the PTA's ability to help. So we're working with Robert right now on two containers that are very much at the end of their useful life and, and looking for some different unique containers that we can get at a better price. So what I hear is my container's not adequate versus I don't have enough supplies. They're metal containers, Robert, do you have any?
Last couple of decades.
Possibly, yeah, I'm thinking 20 years.
Depends on if they have some air movement inside or, or if the roofs, you know, are, are repaired. Sometimes we get them used and they're not much useful life, but...
Typically they're matson containers, you're big shipping containers, they last thirty, they're about thirty.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful.
And they're not being moved, so most of them.
Not being damaged, like, oh.
Maybe you've got a room where it'd be classroom access. Don't get no ideas.
And I think in the last, I also think in the last couple of years, the foundation has also contributed some money to shelving and some other things or something.
Like that.
Yeah, 'cause they get the container and they don't wanna stick a bunch of stuff on the floor and the foundation's given us donations to get, you know, the racks and shelving. Okay, so emergency prep, that's the, you know, in a crisis, you know, we live for three days. We have a WAP that requires work sites of a certain size to identify safety issues, health issues. It's predominantly for employees, but of course it spills over for the students. If there's a giant pothole in the parking lot, a student can trip just as well as a staff member can. So we have a stipended safety committee coordinator position. They interact with their principal to keep everybody apprised of issues. They have to have their own safety committee meetings at their school and then we also have a central safety committee that meets four times a year, that has bargaining unit representation, some people from risk management and some other folks that come together and say, "Hey, we're seeing the pattern of a lot of LNI reports of people falling off this one curb," you know? Should we take a look at that curb and figure out what needs to be fixed so that people aren't being injured? You know, chemical containment, you know, facility issues, just keeping people safe, identifying trends, making sure that corrective action is taken if, if something hazardous is noted.
So I'll talk just a little bit about watchdogs. So that's dads of brave kids. So that is a, this is a program that is actually a national program. It existed in a handful of our schools prior to Sandy Hook, but then really after Sandy Hook and kind of this outpouring of what, what can we do to help kind of support safety in our schools, one of the things that we really encouraged was a formation of watchdog programs. So the idea behind the watchdogs is generally dads are not as engaged in volunteerism in schools as moms have traditionally been, you know, so to get them in as positive male role models, to get them into the school, you know, basically just being eyes and ears interacting with kids, being positive with kids, mentoring, reading with kids, et cetera. The ancillary benefit of that is that it's also another set of eyes and ears on campus that can be observing what's going on. So since, since post-Sandy Hook, we've had a number of schools that have launched watchdog programs and you can see the current list right there, so a couple of junior highs and probably half or more of our elementary schools. So it's a really, it's a really positive program and as I was out doing EDYF presentations around the Sandy Hook time, this topic came up quite a bit and then I remember talking with, with several school committees about, you know, kind of what can I do? Here's a really good, here's a really good idea for how to be involved, to not only interact with kids positively, but also to improve safety and provide, provide greater security in our schools.
Is this, unless there are additional ones or is this our, is this the comprehensive list?
As far as I know, this is a comprehensive list, but as I'm looking at it, I'm pretty sure that East Ridge has a watchdogs program, so I'm not sure that they're on.
I think I'd need ten more twice, ten more's on there twice, so we...
Ten more junior, two more.
Oh, good one. It's my classroom, it's good.
So for other resources, we are a member of the Washington Schools Risk Management Pool, so that schools who have common needs, interests, kid, pool their purchasing power with regards to insurance claims management in one place. The pool is responsible for basically our property insurance, insurance on the buses. They also provide loss control advice. They provide advice on pre-loss issues. If you, if that person fell in the parking lot and broke both ankles, you can call the pool and say, "We're probably gonna have a claim because the staff member fell in the parking lot and broke both ankles." So there's, they do what's called pre-loss, they know that there's probably gonna be a claim coming out and they get the process started, so it's not a big shock and surprise when, you know, that employee forwards their medical claim or, or whatever to us. They also have litigation management. So for instance, in special ed, we have, you know, offices civil rights complaints and they work with us as, as our representation. We have employee issues, Jeff can call and get legal advice or defend us in some, some actions collection or election. So I just joined, you know, Dick was the representative this year, so I got to go to my first meeting in the fall and there's just a host of really great things that they do and they're really accessible, so that's been very good for us. School resource officers, we have, you know, we, we thought about, do we put this with staffing or other resources? Since we contract with law enforcement agencies for SROs and they're not our employees, we put them as, as another resource. Our three high schools all have weekly coverage, but it's a little bit different for each high school because King County provides some, City of Woodville provides some, and City of Bothell provides some SRO coverage, so the schools are all a little bit different.
Is it all day throughout the week?
So, I had to write it down.
On average, yes.
It's four hours, three days per week for Woodville, through the city of Woodville. Five to six hours a day for Bothell.
Every day, yes.
Through the city of Woodville. Yes, every day.
Bothell, for Bothell.
Bothell, please.
For Bothell, please. Four hours a day, three days a week for Englemore, and then the other two days are spent at Kenmore Jr. through King County. Then, so Kenmore is a couple days a week. Leota and Timbercrest also get some, some coverage.
And it's actually a police officer.
Yes, yes. Snow Homage County also provides a school liaison officer for the Snow Homage County schools this way, Fernwood, Lockwood and Coquenee. Maybe a half an hour to an hour a week, but I have heard that the kids really enjoy that person's presence and kind of, you know, Gary Keeler's talked to me and said, "I've called him about this issue, I've asked him for advice on this issue." So even that one half hour to an hour a week has, has been, has been useful to the principals.
What does that look like on-site?
So it's usually just the presence of the kids see and then he kind of checks in with the principal for issues.
During lunch or, because they're in their classes during the day, so.
I'm not totally sure.
Just curious.
It depends and they provided a lot of support. I know Coquenee is very active with, you know, their school safety and they've provided some resources and review on their school safety plan and provided input to them, so, and very amenable to doing additional training and stuff for, for them, but it depends on the school.
And this was a program started by county executive John Lovett, again, post-Sandy to provide, just devote some greater resources to schools that ended up being unincorporated in Snow Homage County. Because generally if you're within a city limit, you call 911 for a school, you get, you get a really fast response. When you're outside in county, it can be a little bit, a little bit more diffused and so his intent, and he's a former police officer, was really to strengthen those connections between the sheriff's department and schools that are unincorporated. He, it was a certain number of officers, four, five or six officers that he specifically devoted to that purpose.
And one of the pieces with the school resource officers to keep in mind that is a challenge for the district is the fact that we have various law enforcement and emergency response agencies, which is unique to North Shore. Because we are split between counties, we've got Snow County, King County, and we have three cities and so that makes it very different. Well, we have Kenmore, that, the main ones, Kenmore, Bothell and Woodville, and so with our responses, it's not consistent across the board and it makes it, it adds a level of complexity and challenge for us in those emergency situations. Just something to keep in mind.
Okay, security cameras. All of our high schools, including SASS, have security cameras. Generally speaking, we don't have someone to man those cameras at all times of the day, but they are very useful after the fact to determine what happened. Popkey and Transportation also have security cameras and we have started on all six junior highs, so I believe it's Skyview and Canyon Park are in process. They've been working with John Weeder's fan and technology to determine, you know, networking and all the technology aspects of the cameras themselves. And they are have or will be receiving funding so that they can obtain security cameras to be installed by the end of next school year, if not sooner. So we're hoping to have four onboard by the end of the school year is our goal and then the last two sometime next year. All buildings are alarmed. We contract with Guardian Security, so if there's any breach, then they get the call and our people also get the call.
I tested that one Saturday when I was at PTA.
Thought you could just slip in and slip out, there's that.
And unfortunately, you know, somebody did break the window and we had to pay for the window, but as soon as that person stepped through the window, the alarm promptly went off and the person went running. So yes, they destroyed the window and we had to repair it, but they didn't, they weren't, yeah, the alarm scared them off.
Scared me too.
And it's a lot of teachers, you know, they go over winter break to finish up something and...
They just get in and out really fast.
Really fast, so. We also have access control systems, which you've seen the card swipe when you're trying to leave this building after it's locked. Here, Transportation, SASS, Woodville, Kenmore and Bothell. And the reason for that is because you can put them in when you do a major remodel. You cannot put an access control system, just slap it on an old building without the, all the wiring and the infrastructure. So every remodel we spec out or the new high school will be spec'd for an access control system because you can do it at the time you're doing all the wiring and, and put the system on top of that.
The advantage of these systems, for those of you that have been around a while, heard Dick talk about this, is that those cards, if they get lost or if they get stolen, they can be electronically deactivated. And so unlike a key, where all of a sudden you're facing the potential of having to re-key a building or at least re-key the exterior doors, you know, Craig from his computer can simply deactivate a card and make it worthless.
And if someone came in this building and forgot to turn off the alarm, when they, so they swiped and they forgot to turn on the alarm, Mike can actually see who just entered the building from home. And, you know, that might help them to know what's going on.
Has the building activated the card so we can?
Your card no work.
Okay, the next piece that we'd like to share with you is the emergency communications component. We have in place, and I think four years ago is when we got that school messenger and our parent emergency communication. So in the event of an emergency, we provide support and have that capability to immediately send out telephone, email, text will be coming onboard the communication house to our families. It's tied into our student information system and it's synced every evening, so if there is a student that registers this afternoon, by tomorrow morning, they will be receiving all of the district school communication and in the event of an emergency or inclement weather, you're gonna get that call or that email.
Yes, I just, some people have indicated to me that they don't want to get it on all of their things. I think when we transferred to the new student information system, we had some issues about...
So there was some changes. There were, and so we communicated extensively in the fall to tell folks, "Okay, we transferred over, please contact your school if it's not the right one," because everything is synced in with synergy. And so there's a capability to override, but we wanted to make sure that they told their school registrar or office manager so it corrected the student information system. It's kind of like garbage in, garbage out, you know, good, good stuff into the student information system, good stuff out.
So they should go to their school.
Yes, yes. We also have flash alert, which used to be schoolreforg.org, but that's where, if there's ever a school closure, that is linked in with media and so that's where we post and typically when we have inclement weather, they transportation are the wonderful folks that take care of that for us and they will post if there's a school closure and that is region-wide, so it's not just North Shore that uses it, it's our entire region. And then additionally, if we have an emergency, communications provide support to the schools or district school websites if we need to post something about a school closure delay. We are using social media, which was our saving grace when we had some challenges with that late start day and some school closures. And we also provide emergency communications support for letters to families in the event, let's say we have an attempted lurch or we see a bear in woods. And then local paper websites, so they do try their best with Bothell Reporter and Woodville Weekly to get information posted and shared out there. Staff emergency communication, we also have that capability and we're synced in with BiTech for staff notifications. We have the capability for all staff emails depending on what the situation is and phone trees. Remember disable phone trees because we have school messenger because there could be a sensitive issue such as the death of a staff member or a highly sensitive situation where the schools will implement their phone trees depending on the emergency to call staff.
So with the power outage, that just made me think, so is the, the telephone system and the school website all powered in this building? Is that what happened, that we lost power and that's why the website was down and we couldn't get phone calls?
No, that was just a weird fluke that happened that day. So school messenger is completely separate. So the benefit of the school messenger is it is an outside hosted agency that has three locations in the event that, let's say we had a massive earthquake, we could still still step out. The weird thing was, school messenger had some challenges that day. We've never, ever had an issue with school messenger, unfortunately. The same day that we had some issues with our website, happened to be the day that school messenger had an issue with school messenger. So it was multiple issues happening at once.
Okay, and our webs, I'm asking, so the website, is it on a server here in this building, so there's some power?
It is also, it's remotely hosted, but we had some issues because right now, not everything is on school wires. We still have some internally hosted pieces, but our internal stuff still communicates with school wires and there was just some strange...
Because the power being out locally, it caused some problems.
Yeah, so one of the things that we have with this building, because this is sort of our main hub and it's a server room, so we have backup generator systems, but we're also linked to what we call remote, remote operating center. So it's monitoring 24 by 7 the power. And so A, now it's Robert who gets the phone call when the power goes out, but B, the generator automatically trips on to serve the server rooms.
Okay, so I was thinking earthquake and the region loses power, at least for a while we'll have to generate the power.
And we haven't completely transferred over everything to school wires and cut school centers completely off, still on that server, so that was one of them.
But I think you bring up a good point and it was kind of captured in Jesus's summary a little bit, which is things like that will happen, where you'll have multiple things that maybe it won't, multiple failures that you need to be planning or preparing or at least...
And that's why we've got multiple trees that we use and so we're very flexible in that stuff goes down and what else are we gonna use to make sure we get the information right?
And it's kind of interesting to me how dependent parents became on school messenger in a very small frame, timeframe.
Well, when I came to the district, we had a very different system and it was funny because you could never have used it to do a district-wide message and so you're right, you've become dependent on it and it's a very different issue than we had. So it's important to note that with our, with our procedures and our protocols, we do follow the incident command system structure in our emergency communication and handling of emergencies. We coordinate our communications, sorry, I'm gonna copy, with principals, the assistant superintendent, deputy superintendent, superintendent and our lead agency depending on the crisis or situation. So it is very coordinated and communications, I service the district's folks. Uh, in communications, I service the district's spokesperson in the event of an emergency. This just kind of shows you that chain of command, um, is that the principal, school staff reports to the principal, they're communicating with the principal. The principal is working directly with their assistant superintendent or with the superintendent and deputy superintendent depending on the situation. So we do have a chain of command and we adhere to that in the event of an emergency. It does assist us because a lot of times in an emergency, it's moving fast and furious. Everyone knows their role so that we can provide the support to the school, uh, or to multiple schools. So this, what this shows you is just all the various departments that are linked into that principal to provide support in the event of an emergency from support services, safety and security, deputy superintendent, assistant superintendent, communications, student services, HR if needed, and our outside responders. So we're very coordinated.
And just as a, we also have a, a email distribution list that we call major incidents that links in all of these folks as well. So even more minor things, like there's been a particular event at a school or something like that, um, that we just want everybody to kind of be in the loop about, we utilize that very frequently.
Are we on that email list?
No.
No, but Larry's, then if it's, if it's pertinent, he emails all of us.
Okay.
I mean, if it's something that we really, that we need to know, that is important.
Right, well, again, I'm thinking like major emergency, it'd be helpful because people, probably to the president of the board.
Yeah, and that's always kind of, yeah, that's always kind of, you know, I feel like it's something that you need to be working on to make sure.
And that's right.
Okay, okay. All right, so one of the things that we try to do in Transportation is treat our buses as classrooms. So they're really rolling classrooms just to get them booked on wheels either in the morning or in the afternoon. So a couple of things that we have, uh, all of our buses are tied to a GPS unit, so we can track all our buses, um, rolling, where they're stopping, et cetera, et cetera. We really work to, try to do a good job with our mandatory and optional training around safety protocols. So let me give you an example. We are working currently right now with the Marysville Police, who, um, where we're trying to determine if there's a lockdown prior to the school, what did they do, what was some of the examples and what was some of the lessons learned. So for us in our district, um, if a school is locked down typically and the bus is on site, then they're treated as a lockdown on site. If they're off-site, then they typically go to a high school. If the high school's locked down, then the fallback plan is Hopkeye. So at least we'll know where our kids are at, um, depending upon the lockdown procedure. So we typically go through the training with our staff. One of the things that we also have the luxury is we have CB radios on all of our buses that is linked both to Transportation as well as, I have one in my office for emergency procedures, I believe we have one here also for emergency procedures. But we also set up certain codes, so like hospitals, we have a code red or a code blue. In Transportation, if there is an emergency, there's a code 99. So we use a code 99 that says, call police, this is, this is an emergency. We also then try to team up with local law enforcement, as I said, in Marysville, even our own local, local law enforcement, especially around incidents with Sandy Hook in some of the, the school shootings we had, given that typically they'll lock down the school, but what we do in that situation applies. So we'll work with our local law enforcement to set up some type of protocol and use that as a training mechanism with our staff.
So with the increasing reliance on charter buses, how much are they looked into all of this?
So for us, that's a difficult thing that we struggle with charter. Um, right now, we're just contracting the buses. Um, there's no real protocols that we're communicating with them and that's something that Con is trying to shore up as part of what we do with some of our outside overnight charters.
Right, so we were out on a field trip and coming back, schools were locked down.
Our main contact would probably be via cell phone with our staff, my guys who's the charter.
Yeah. So I think that's the challenge that we have is we don't have any communication tool other than, uh, cell phones, but whomever is on the.
So getting some of these procedures in place is really important and the recent incident in Shoreline, talking with, um, their superintendent, they have a three-tier transportation system. One tier had been, was already at school, the second tier had just been dropped off and they were in the middle of transporting the third tier. So they had, they had people in school, on their way to school, just arriving at school. I mean, that was kind of your worst, your worst.
Was the incident at Shoreline?
There was a report of a guy with a weapon on one of their campuses early in the morning and they had been.
So I'm just going to tell a story just to back up with the charters. When we went up to, the Inglemore band went up to Bellingham, we had three charter buses and some of the issues we ran into was not enough seating. So it was one parent per bus, there was no staff member on the bus, so, you know, they may not be on the bus if there's not enough seating. And two, the charters rotated out their buses, so each day we had a different bus with a different number of seats. So there was a lot of scrambling of who was on, you know, we didn't really try to communicate. Bring us a 47-seater and a 55-seater the next day.
And vice versa.
Well, they had that happen because then we had so much.
And that's some of the challenges that I think we've experienced with charters is that, um, we provide the information and the operation, holiday operationalize that.
So they're, they're, you know, great for a day that you are sacrificing some safety gap with these together.
Okay, that next piece that we're just going to step through, it has to do with school safety and after Sandy Hook. We have, um, very strong systems in place currently as a district with our, um, school emergency plans. Um, district, um, we just went through the district emergency response, um, structure for us. And what, um, the district did after Sandy Hook is we contracted with an outside safety consultant to get their input on our program and ways that we can continue to improve upon that. So we contracted with Jesus Vila Hermosa and Marcy Scott with Crisis Reality Training. And what they did was they conducted site assessments at five of our schools. And we chose those schools strategically so that we could get, um, size of school, but then also location within the district because of the various emergency response agencies. So you take a look at Crystal Springs, it's a very, um, small footprint, but a very, um, highly enrolled area in Boffel. Cokanese, um, a large school, um, but it's in a Woodville feeder pattern. Then we also did Kenmore and Timbercrest. Uh, and then we chose Boffel High School, um, because of the openness of the campus at Boffel. And so, um, well, this spring of, uh, 2014, they came out, they did a site assessment. So not only did he walk the campus, um, with Craig and some staff members, did a thorough walk through the campus, but he also, um, participated and observed, uh, one of their lockdown drills. And, um, they also worked on for us a district security review. And you have the executive summary of that. So some of the overall recommendations, what you'll notice, um, a lot of that has to do with oversight and systems. Right now, your school, um, your school site based with the, um, emergency prep. Uh, and so, uh, a lot of these recommendations come back to consistency district-wide. So that's that constant theme, consistent theme that you'll see. So his number one recommendation was to hire a school security manager, director, to help oversee all of those pieces, um, whether it's, you know, our, our safety program, the training and all of the pieces associated with the district's safety plan. Um, he also recommended civility policies and that helps set the tone for the expectation of behavior on campus. Um, that's something the district currently has, um, at this time.
So, can you go into a more detailed wedding advice of civility?
A civility policy, so we're going to view a school district has a civility policy and what it does is it, it lays out an expectation for any visitor, um, behavior on campus. So it helps to, in the event, we have for us, visitors on campus, let's say for example, you know, we have an unruly or someone who's under the influence of alcohol or drugs, we approach it that way. But civility policies basically set the tone for the behavior on campus and it's a strong statement.
They tend to be two-way as well as they, they also tend to have statements about what a visitor, what kind of behavior a visitor should expect from school staff as well. But it, but it provides kind of that, that backdrop for staff to be able to have the words and the framework to say, I'm sorry, you're not, you know, your behavior is not, um, what we accept in our building, so please leave campus and come back when you're prepared for the.
That foundation.
That's a great way of putting it. It's a foundation and just truly.
It's a quadicconda.
Yeah, it is, it is, it's very much.
That would work.
One of his other strong recommendations is our lockdown drills. We do lockdown drills regularly and a lot of times it's static, it's when kids are in class. And so his recommendation is to expand upon that slowly, not jump into passing period right now or when you're at lunch. But what he wants us to do, you know, is to continue to build on that so that we're, um, comfortable, we're prepared and we do those lockdown drills, um, in passing periods and, and at lunch. Another recommendation he had was to continue to expand our SRO program. One of the challenges we've, we faced as a district is the lack of available officers for SROs anyway, but that is one of his recommendations to further expand, um, our capabilities and our program.
I, I saw in here somewhere that they also talked about hiring, uh, security guards or security personnel from security firms. Do we do that?
We do not do that at this time and it would, um, it would be something that the district would have to look at because that opens up another, um, bunch of, not problems, but other issues that we would have to address versus having contracting out, yes.
We do have campus security monitors at all of our high schools, so a person who's dedicated to just general campus security, but they're our employer.
Right, that's what I, I remember all that talk that's been in the news about having people from the outside come into schools and they haven't been fingerprinted and, you know, they're, they have criminal backgrounds, that's, that's.
Yeah, and they're ready to train and come.
Only using that.
And it seems that SROs really interact with the school community, the students, the staff so well.
And they're tied directly with law enforcement, which is a different element than, than security, but it, it is a recommendation, it would be something to.
Did we hire a school security manager?
Or Zach Friday? It just, the position just closed last Friday. Okay. Um, we have interviews scheduled for next week, first round of interviews scheduled next week.
Yeah, so around that, just a couple of words on that particular position. So we used to have a director of risk management in the district and then several years ago, when we were in the midst of, um, lots of millions of dollars of budget cuts, um, that person left the district and we did not replace that position. So we've been a bit pieced in together over the last several years where business services has had part of it, because they oversee safety and security and risk management, Leanna's had part of it, Ryan in Sports Service had part of it. And it just seems that if, we need to bring that all back together now. That we don't necessarily need the risk management piece, the interface with the risk pool, insurance coverage, all of those litigation types of issues. We've got those pretty well covered, so we think that this person can really just focus themselves on the safety and security aspect of, you know, training, drills, interface with law enforcement, making sure we've got the right procedures in place, all, you know, all of those kinds of, of pieces without having to be worried about insurance claims and all that kind of stuff.
And then the next, um, recommendation he had for our oversight and systems and that is a building-based team, so expanding on what we currently have, really explained to what we've done. And his recommendation is just expand upon that, but then also the consistency, um, district-wide and school-wide work recommendations. And then he did add the, the watchdogs program, uh, as a, a recommendation, which, um, as Leonard mentioned, we have them in many of our schools, but not all of those schools and he saw, um, the benefit of that, um, for us.
I saw that he, in here it said that there's grants for the SROs too to be.
Yes.
There are, there's, there's fewer and fewer. When SROs first came on the scene, there were a lot of grants, a lot of federal grants that supported SROs and those tended to dry up a little bit, but we, we'll continue to look for those. Again, our, as with most grants, um, the demographics and the circumstances of our district doesn't often make us a top candidate to receive those grants, but.
Boffel police put in for a grant for, to support extra SROs for us and it, they, they didn't get that one. And we wrote a letter of support and.
Did that, one of them downsized recently, didn't they?
Boffel downsized.
Their police department?
No, I mean their SROs.
Each of two.
And it also does take time for the training of new officers coming onboard, you turn 12 to 18 months for, for training, so it's, um, hold there. The next, um, category of recommendations is all the state safety procedures and a lot of his recommendations tie into, um, those procedural pieces and making sure it's consistent, um, district-wide so that, um, every building is doing the same and there's comfort, um, in those pieces. Top recommendation, locking classroom doors, um, as part of our procedural pieces. It does support the single point of entry by making sure classroom doors are locked during the day or, or entry doors. That's what he is recommending for us to take a look at.
I, I, I was thinking that also and then I'm thinking of my daughter's classroom at Cokanese and the volunteers that go in and out of there and the description to the, yeah.
So one of the pieces with this is we'll have to balance it with security because we always want to make sure we have safe, secure environments with practicality and what, what we do is.
I was thinking a teacher having to get up every five seconds to open the door and interrupt her teaching and it's kind of having to help that.
Yeah, it'll, it's definitely something we'll be, um, taking a look at. And then also having a consistent lockdown purpose and definitions as a district, enhancing on what we currently have. Also staff responsibility district-wide, so making sure we're very clear with our, the expectations of staff members, uh, in the event of a lockdown or emergency situation and that we're trained to those, not only with our substitute teachers, that was one recommendation that he had, but also for all staff members and making sure we're moving from that site-based to district-based, um, expectations. Another recommendation we had was for the phone procedures. We know that when an emergency situation happens, we need to be able to immediately respond, so what systems can we have in place to very quickly be able to, um, implement? And he had, um, some recommendations about phone procedures and having recordings, but then also, yes, pre-recorded messages, but making sure they're consistent, um, school by school. And then another recommendation we had was just with our building alarm systems, the way we currently do, that we're just some ways we can continue to improve upon that so there's complete communication between district security and, um, law enforcement in the event that we have a call. Um, the other category of recommendations from, um, Crisis Reality had to do with improvements we can make to our facilities to continue to improve security. One of those was to install interior classroom door locks so that there's the opportunity to, um, lock the door from the inside. Also work towards the single point entry to schools. Our schools are very open, many of our schools very open footprint, so it's also done practicality. We're not going to be able to rebuild every single one of our schools in the next four years. But also taking a look at how we can, um, funnel our visitors to that main point to be going to the, um, main office, um, to be checking in or sections back to procedure we might follow, um, those procedures, but he is strongly recommending the single point of entry. We did review this with our principals and the crisis teams and there were some questions that the principals had, um, backed for Crisis Reality for further, um, clarification on. And single point entry was, um, one of those areas for Jesus to, uh, expand on because it comes back down to practicality, how practical is it at the building? And maybe there's some things we need to be thinking about a little bit differently based on the level of the school and the layout. Another recommendation from Crisis Reality was to line, um, the glass panes near the school entrances with that 3M shatter resistant film. It's not going to stop someone from entering, but it's going to slow them down. Um, we have many beautiful windows, uh, on our campuses and so that was one of the recommendations. And then also the window coverings for classrooms, so making sure that, um, there's some consistency there, um, within the classrooms to be able to, you know, tilt the blinds but have covering so you can quickly pull them down and make it so you can't see into that classroom.
I'm laughing because Woodmore has been trying for, I don't know, many years to get window coverings in their classrooms and the issue, fire department, okay, district is great, City of Boffel, building permit is not allowing the window covering.
That's confusing. So why, why did they even have a say in that?
Because it's a building and it's being installed, but it's not permanently installed into the. I mean, I know, but I think for, to think back to districts, you'd have to get all of the cities onboard.
Well, one of the other paradoxes we have is in designing buildings, we want, you know, natural light, we want openness, we want all of these things that from a safety and security standpoint are very undesirable. And we're currently experiencing that as we're working through the North Shore Primary Center, that most of those classrooms are in the interior of the building without external windows. And actually the Health Department requires that for certain kinds of classrooms, there would be access to external. would be access to external light. So you've got all of these forces that aren't necessarily all aligning themselves in the right way.
The other recommendation, security cameras, then also that consistency, so making sure that it's a district-wide directive versus just school building-based because you run into problems with technology. Also ensuring that we have the capability to be able to remotely access those pieces. And then also he did recommend, you know, for law enforcement to be able to access those as well. So that's some improvements for our security cameras, but then also just making sure there's a district-wide standard there. Sightage, improving signage and consistent signage on our campuses so that it's very clear where the main office is and expectations on our buildings, so there's consistency there. There were some recommendations for lockdown room identification, so in that executive summary, identifying some kind of icon that can be put outside of doors and training to that so a student or a staff member knows, "I can go into this room and I can lock down, I can lock it from the inside, someone can't get in." He recommended that. And then also in, inside of our classrooms to have the cardinal directions so that when you're inside that room, you know, this is north, south, east, west, so that in the event you need to communicate out, you can tell nine-one-one or whoever, "Okay, I heard the noise from the north side of my classroom."
That's not an expensive cost, but.
No, it isn't.
I, I like that one.
So to date, and they can speak to that, and they've already mentioned that the hiring of the safety and security manager position who ultimately would be responsible for updating, implementing our safety procedures and that district-wide program that we have. And then also analyzing the implementing from these recommendations so we can continue to strengthen our program, but also take the recommendations and put them into action as appropriate and where it will support the district.
We see this, this as the entry plan for the safety experience.
And then the capital improvements, Ryan can speak to.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've done in the two thousand fourteen long time is we earmarked a million dollars worth of safety upgrades. So one of the things that we're working on with Leanna and he is trying to determine what's the best bang for our buck, given that the next opportunity will be in two thousand and eighteen. So we're trying to look at, every school might require something a little bit different and how do we spread that across the vision? All right, so routine facilities, operations support. So private prevention through environmental design, so one of the things that we're working at is likely the same as this push and pull with the architects and making sure that we design for education, but also make sure that there's some type of safety concept around that. The other things that we're doing is very similar to, I think, what you do around your house, is you trim up few trees, make sure that bushes, it's not overgrown over your window like my house, all of those type of good things. So that's one of the things that we've been working with our grounds department, is make sure we trim up trunks, cleaning as much as we can, keeping things around the exterior windows somewhat visible. I know Robert and staff and, he's really looking at emphasizing district badges, so I think, yeah.
That's a nice.
So that's one.
Nineteen ninety-two.
Something else though, at Kokonis, what I like that they do is the kids are trained to ask an adult if they don't, are they doing that in all schools?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's awesome. So I walked in and didn't have a yellow pay on and I had my kids all around me, so it was, it was good.
You had your kids right?
I was running back to the office.
And that's rookie, like, I think we know who's in the building, right? And then we can recognize a district employee versus a non-district employee or stranger danger. Right? I think in some of our newer schools, where we can, we've already converted to dual locks. You know, we have single locks now, but we've already converted to many of our schools that we re-bottomed. Closed caption television system has already been added in many of our newer schools that we built. And the other thing that we've done is we've really partnered with SAS to really be one campus. So if, at the Support Services, we have the eighteen to twenty-one year program as well as SAS, so we're really partnering with SAS to be one, one building as far as emergency preparedness.
Steph? I think I'll, I'll be quick here because we talked about several routines a little bit earlier. I'm going to talk a little bit about district-level safety and security staffing and school-based safety and security staffing, just a touch on the new safety and security manager position here. So that recruitment actually closed in January sixteen because we had a robust recruitment, fifty-six applicants, a lot of people, so it feels like she has a pretty big group of applicants that she's going to be interviewing on Friday.
Wednesday and Friday.
Wednesday and Friday. Just a note on that, safety and security, the focus of that job is mostly what we've been talking about here. There's another sense of safety, which is worker safety, student safety and patron safety that we also deal with in this context. So current staffing, district level is security supervisor is currently filled by Craig Phillips, I think most of you know Craig, and a security officer currently filled, that's Mike Cook. Those are both full-time, full-year positions. We also have a number of temporary weekend evening event security staff, so that range is from Hotkey security for event staffing as well as a weekend staffing for both emergency call-out as well as specific patrols in areas that we need, we feel we need people present at one of our facilities during the weekend. Those are all temporary staff. The number of those is managed by a current security staff, Craig and Mike manage that list and figure out how to deploy those folks.
But they're either our employees, which means they've been fingerprinted, or they're law enforcement personnel, likely contract correct.
School level, there, as Larry mentioned, there are campus supervisors at each high school, so those are school-term positions, they are mostly, they are campus supervision positions, they patrol the campus, make sure students are where they belong. Certainly not law enforcement or security in any larger sense of the word, but they, that resource does exist and it, as Lydia mentioned, school resource officers at the secondary school are primarily at secondary schools that are contracted. The other sense of the word safety is what we do in terms of our workers' comp function. We have one position in Human Resources that administers our workers' compensation, and I apologize for that non-gendered term, I should be workers' compensation. We're highly sensitized to that as you think of this one. Aubrey Martin works in our office, manages the claims process, we have a third-party claims administrator that we work with and that, the focus of that is return to work and also identify safety issues from a worker's perspective. Christine Cash in the Business Services office is our, one of our liaisons with the risk pool and when it comes to safety, that focuses primarily on student injury claims and in terms of both processing potential claims as well as identifying areas that we need to give safety for students. And I think, that's it.
So this, I think, is kind of the recommendation summary from the Jesus report. Again, this was a presentation that we put together with many hands, so this might be a little bit out of order, but he had some recommendations around personnel, particularly the safety and security manager that we're moving forward with, procedures and training, and some really good advice there that we're going to have to sort out what's practical and doable. But we see, again, this document as a really good starting place for somebody who comes into the district in that particular position. And then obviously the capital improvements, as we design and build new facilities like North Creek, we're incorporating more things like, you know, the keyless entry and the cameras and all of those kinds of things that we can hardwire into the buildings on the front end. But retrofitting our large number of older buildings is going to be a longer-term challenge for sure.